We call it the whole city council regular meeting for Tuesday, July 19, 2022 at seven. Oh, one. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bennett.
Mayor.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Stratus.
Present.
Councilor Weathers. Councilor Murray.
Here.
Oh, present. Stand for effect. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite in justice. Next is the approval of the agenda. I don't see any changes. Do you think so?
And yes. Like this request that we delete item number two under new business. And then we change the under staff reports to put the public which report first.
Okay, we can do that. Anything from the council? You think you want to add or say? Okay, good. Next up is the consent agenda. Council members request not to be removed from the consent agenda. Did we discuss as the first item, first new business item of the meeting? What we have, we have the check right this year for June 2022, approval of the minutes for June 21st, 2022. The regular meeting, approval of the minutes for the June 28th, 2022 special meeting. They might want to hold anything out. We have a motion approved. It's a motion. And then presented. One second. Tim made the motion. Jenny seconded it to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Public comments? Do we have anything from the public? Okay, we'll give you time to forget later. We'll remember you. The council. If not, we're up to staff reports. Or down to page 22, which would be the city administrator, but we want the public to go first. Mr. Baker, you want to speak?
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Difficulties here. Okay, so I did not prepare a staff report, but I did have some updates for you guys. See response back from DEQ on the in regards to the violations last summer. So just going to read a real quick blurb here. So it says, thank you for meeting with DEQ to discuss settle penalty assessment of the city. They must follow procedures and administrative rules which determine the base penalty. So upon them receiving the factors are discussed with DEQ, they did not find any grounds to reduce or change any of the words used in the penalties. So we have a penalty of $2,362.50 which paid today. I know this is not the penalty part's not what we're discussing, but the verbiage was not the outcome we were looking for. None of us, the, you know, staff or the engineer, but I think the best route is just to move on from here and just continue on, so. One other update. Was there any questions on that before I move on? Okay, so one other update. I did get the cover bridge open, the gate to work today. Still have not heard back from Lake County. We'll reach out to them again tomorrow. And then one other good news update. We have 181 meters installed in the ground of the new change out program. And that's all I had for updates unless you guys had any.
Any questions?
How many meters left?
What's that?
How many, how many meters left? Just curious.
So just under 200, Gail.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, city administrator's report. Mr. Potter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. In the agenda pack, I have a revision log of change orders that we're tracking. We approved three change orders for the city with Pioneer Street since the last meeting. The first is adding a lobby, a soffit in the lobby for $969. Second is deleting some tubular lighting, which was owned in a $4,200 credit. And adding some power requirement related items for the Vader Rack service system for $1500. One item on the revision log is a big deal is that the contractor is donating some party board for the facade of the project to make it look nicer. He's donating the materials and the time. We do have exterior painting for the projects. We'll be able to make sure that everything matches all the buildings. It would be a very impactful contract to make that donation. We have hired a library director. She's scheduled to start next week. Federal security has installed wiring for the camera system as well as wiring for the security alarm. I'm going to approve an application for us to participate in the Oregon Digital Library Consortium. That's for our HEAT program. Penny obtained an $800, it's a little over $800 grant for us to buy some children's books. And I'd like to share some pictures with everybody with what we've been working on. Let's share the screen here. Right? This is the wrong bit. All right, this is the circulation counter. As you can see, this got some brackets right here. The desk. The public computer stations will be over here. It's another shot of the circulation desk. There's the outside with the exterior door with the side light window window. Here's the entrance to the library, the door, side light, window window. Here's the entrance. You'll see it's recessed entrance. Major sense put up the party board. Here is looking at the end of the library, which is a circulation desk and workroom. This is a window for staff in the workroom to keep an eye on the library. Circulation desk, public computer space. Here's the entrance to the library. The library workroom, looking out of the library workroom window. Library workroom. Okay, here's the two windows on the back of the library. This is the entrance to the library from the lobby. You'll see there's a window in the city hall side. We entered the door to the library and we're looking now at the conference room entrance. Now we're in the conference room. Here's the library. Here's going into the city hall. Conference room. Okay, now conference room, looking in the city hall. Here's the city hall board counter. Workspace. Here's the works, other workspace, the added door that we added in the city hall side, entrance to the city administrator office. Entrance to city hall, public work, public service counter. Any questions?
I mean, thanks Jerry for donating to have the money that that's a little bit.
He was generated some really great ideas on this project and I can tell he's hard at it. Yes, he is. And he's, he's got fantastic crews. Those guys are great. Then moving on to East Main Street, we closed on the right of way. The Lake County, the last thing we're waiting on is a letter from DEQ. Other items, the code committee met last night and we had a really great meeting. The code committee generated some fantastic ideas. A lot of the discussion, a lot of recommendations that we see coming out of this after we've expanded housing options in the city. Having more options and affordable options, also streamlining processes for developers who won't have so many steps to go through. That was very important to the code committee. It was a great meeting. Anybody who's interested can check out the materials on the city website. The next step in the process is we'll have community meetings in September. Then we'll update the draft based on that feedback. And then we'll have a joint city council planning commission meeting sometime in the fall. We'll revise everything and then try to get the updates approved by the end of the year. I presented our grant application for the local government grant program from last week. Unfortunately, that was unsuccessful. I do have a meeting on Wednesday with our other grant. We do have the land and water conservation grants. And that grant manager informed me that all may not be lost with that grant. So we're going to match those two up. And now that one is out, we don't have the ability to meet those matching requirements. But she informed me that all is not lost. So we'll see what she has to say. We'll be bringing that back to you. We have completed a draft of the Water Master Plan on for the vet to the council. If you have any comments questions after reading the draft, let me know. We'll try to incorporate the final draft. Filing for city council elections. Deadline for that is August 30th and I corresponded with the Lake County emergency management department this morning. They're starting up their county wise disaster planning. And I informed them that I'd like for us to be incorporated into that. Because we don't have the resources to develop our own national hazard mitigation plan. You've got to have a certified national hazard mitigation plan to qualify for FEMA Thunder or disaster mitigation and planning grants. So I've informed them that I'd like to be incorporated into that. They want to start by the end of this year and then try to have everything approved, the final plan by the end of 2023. This is, it's at no cost to us except for staff. This, this will be a very good product for this. What questions do you have for me?
Um, we, we had talked about whether we could come up with a matching funds for the LWCF grant earlier and we felt that with everything else that was going on, we couldn't. I'm wondering if, if we want to revisit that now that we know we're not going to get the LGGP grant to match for the $250,000 approximately. Maybe think about if, if, and I don't know exactly, you know, we apply for certain non-umpirements yet. But is there anything that we could match to get some of that with Jeremy's plan? If there's not an alternate method to we see some of the grants from the LWCF grant? That there might be certain things that we might want to get started that maybe we could come up with funds to match us with part of that that might make sense to get a time jump on things such as pending fees or underground infrastructure. Things like that, that maybe you don't have to go full barrel $250,000 matching. But it really does make sense logically to get these things done now if we can afford it.
This definitely possible. We have about 60,000 or 70,000 in our parks SDC fund. So if that's a 50% match, we'd have a total of $140,000 project. So I would just have to have a conversation with the grant manager and see what's possible and if we can amend the scope of downward. But I'll be bringing that back to you.
And, and any chipping away we can do now, so later on, we don't have to come up with money for that. And we bet that start on. Things that make sense to get it at start on now instead of really add it to the speed.
Can you repeat that again after we did $50,000?
Well, what I just mentioned right now is we have about 70 or 60 or 70,000 dollars in the parks SDC. That's for the SDC. More into guessing?
Yeah. Um. This is the unfortunate part about putting off our goal setting session until the first of the year. But I think that project is, needs to be reevaluated in the scope of what priorities there are because that's a big project. It has long-term impacts. It's kind of a, once you start, you don't go back and there's going to be a lot of components to that whole project that I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with, you know, doing progress stuff because after reading our master plan, that we're going to have to get that. So, you know, we're small, we can't, you know, produce money. But again, and maybe it's on the heels of obsessing with this evaluation so much and the excessive workload issue and all of that, that I tend to think that we have needs before wants that, that we really need to address and do well. We've got a ton of development going in. And if, if we don't manage that well for the long haul, we've missed a golden opportunity while we're doing things over here with, with a park that, you know, is functional. We're not talking about a field of weeds. It's a problem. So again, I'm torn, you know, I don't like to put things off, but that's what we said we were going to do, not do the goal session until January or so. So, but I just think that has a huge piece of Jeremy and other staff's time as well as money because we don't know what our priorities are, what we're going to, where we're going to need, need that money. So I get your point. But I'm torn, I'm torn. I just don't think that's the number one priority that, that, that I would suggest that Jeremy. He's already earned hundreds and hundreds of hours, even just writing grants, you know, and that's great because normally they're successful and, and that even though you're obviously in a positive, but you know, score with regards to that, but I, that, I'm just I just don't know that that's the next top thing.
Well, I agree too. Except, except that just to remind us that money-wise, we chose not to take any of these efforts. So unless we can come up with something, it's really not.
Well, I would, I would say that, that picking low fruit, but important fruit, things like underground electrical conduit, things like that, jumps boxes. Don't take a lot of time to plan or to do it. You don't have to complete the entire grid. You can just do like the main structure of it. It wouldn't take a lot of the area's time. It's really about focusing those efforts on the things that can be done. That really maybe aren't giant cost items, but they, they get done and don't take either time or money as much as the finished product that will be in action in terms of the vision of the entire park. So I, I don't disagree with you that, you know, one of my goals, which is to kind of pull back and take care of some of our business and close out some business before we kick on to things. But I think we pick a few things that don't necessarily take a lot of staff or the city administrator's time and maybe try to accomplish those things.
And I understand that except that we don't have that match now. And so that puts it right back in this desk and we've got this other stuff. I just, I just like to take time out personally. It's not decided tonight.
Oh, no, no, I was not saying decide tonight. I'm saying discussions going forward. He's going to go talk to the LWCF folks and see, they said this might not be the all end all of the LGGP didn't have. You know, we weren't successful with that grant, but they might be still in that. But tier back from that. It was just discussion going forward if they're depending on what that discussion titles.
Well, I believe we have a real solid plan for what we're going to put into park. Kind of what what the priorities, where it is, everything, you know. So, you know, until we have a till we've gone through it, filtered through it, said this, we want this, one of that, this is for this, you know, until we know what we're putting the infrastructure in for. I think that we're kind of, it'd be good to have the money to put the infrastructure in once we decide on exactly what we're going to have. There's some things in that that I don't see as needing doing or like the same to send it. I'd like to see the, the part even on the, the plan, so. That would be fairly inexpensive, but I think until we, until we come there with the plan, this, this is what we want in our park. That will put in perspective to support that. This will be running behind some day. I know, I'd like to agree that that's what we need to get to. We need to figure out where we are and what we need to do some baby of some. If we get a smaller amount of money and do some things with it, with that, I wouldn't want to spend all $60,000 of the SDC funds on, on something I had. I, I, I just, I think this is something that I'd like to the council for us to really go through and say, okay, what do we want to do and how we want to do. There's things like the area of the street, but in visual market and stuff, that's not expensive.
Yeah, like I said, I wasn't trying to, to send the city council down a path tonight. I was just addressing something that I thought of that has Jeremy, you know.
I don't disagree with you, but I think it's about two or three steps in front of where we need, what, you know, the direction we need to go on, but yeah.
Well, obviously what Jeremy finds out, what areas we do. When do you read the papers?
It's, it's going to be tomorrow.
See what they have to say.
Yeah, I'll see what they have to say and bring it back to you. We got, can have a conversation.
Some of these want a 10% badge, 20% badge. Maybe it is a small level money with a smaller batch, you know, so they give us, that would give us some ideas. Okay, what do we want to do? We need to get back from the FOP over. But anyway, that's a long paper. The possession preparedness. Is the fire department involved with that? Or do you know?
They could be. I forwarded that information to the fire chief. I'm sure he, he gets it. He's plugged into those.
They should be involved with that. I think they're part of, they're, you know, they're part of our whole land of this town. So, you know, we, we can, we can write things on paper and stuff like that, but they're the ones that setting out the trucks things like that. It was like when we had our big snowstorm, I know the city staff rode with the fire trucks and things like that to check on people that we do that could need assistance and things like that, but they, they have the, they have the means to do things like that. So they, they should be. I, I, I beg of that meetings to know that, that, that is something that they've discussed in the past as a part of the satisfaction for preparing this plan for this, for this unity and so on. They should be involved with that if they're not. Absolutely. So we should think that. Anything else?
No, sir.
Except there's a police report. That's all. Thanks. I see. Best hours this month, but they have a lot of hours last month. So I guess that they're balancing. I don't know if they're saving some hours for the back burner jam on that too. Any questions? What's all on? The first item of business. This is our first reading of rule, ordinance 307, an ordinance declaring ban on service centers and the manufacturer of those products. I mean, what's the, what's the word?
Silocidin.
Silocidin.
Seeing every place isn't.
But the silocidin.
They could have different. They could have just rid that magic mushroom.
Yeah, they've done that.
Fair little spiel. Ordinance are local governmental laws. Every ordinance of the council shall be read fully and distinctly in open council meetings on two different days. An ordinance is usually introduced at the first meeting and adopted at the second meeting. Any of the readings may be by title only if no council member or president at the meeting requests to have the ordinance read in full. Different hand, if a copy of the ordinance is provided to the counselors before the first meeting of the ordinance, copies made available to the public. Those may, where all those standards met there was called to read by title on.
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Did you message to comment on this?
Yes, I got your message.
When would be the appropriate time? Usually that would happen before any motions or discussion.
Yeah, just, just sit, sit tight for a minute and I'll, I'll.
So at this point, we have a motion for the first reading then. Either in full or by title. We will make a motion.
Here's just a motion that we're going to create it by. I'll make a motion.
You have a second? Real motion is second for a first reading by title only. City law ordinance 307, an ordinance declaring a ban on those service centers and manufacturer of those products. That's by title only. Next would be, we need a motion for a reading on the second meeting on August 2nd, I believe, their next council meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion for a second reading on August 2nd. We can, we can put you in there after that if you want. Okay, we have a motion for a second reading.
I make the motion that second reading on August 2nd.
For a second? Okay, Jimmy proposed that Gail confirm the second reading. We sure they had a roll call.
The roll call.
Yeah. All those. We have the backup.
Yeah.
Okay, we had the
So I made a motion.
Whatever, for the first reading, all those in favor of a first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, votes? No one. Okay, we'll do the first reading again. City law ordinance of 307, an ordinance declaring a ban of those service centers and the manufacturer to sell them whatever products. Okay, we got that. Now we, we've had a motion for a, a second reading by Jimmy and second by Gail for August 2nd. All those in favor of a second reading on August 2nd, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Paulson, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, yes, I would like to speak and I would have liked to have commented, uh, you know, before the extended discussion and, uh, motions on the, uh, item, that, that would be the usual place for a comment. I'm, I'm disappointed that I wasn't allowed to. Anyway, my name is Steve Paulson, I live at five twenty Sunridge Lane. Mr. Mayor, counselors, Mr. Administrator, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I speak in opposition to this and should have been heard before you discussed it, and I'm wondering where the discussion was. I, I'm puzzled as to why this is even on the agenda, there is no reason to treat these businesses, assuming they ever happen in Lowell, any differently than you treat any other business in Lowell. A couple of comments on the ordinance as written. The only reason asserted in the ordinance is to why you might want it appears to be, and whereas number six, which states that the city wants to have time to be able to adopt the state regulations and establish reasonable time, place, manner of operation regulations, and it's certainly a reasonable thing to do that kind of thing, though you don't do that for any other business in Lowell. Uh, so again, why the difference? If you do want to establish these types of regulations, what would they look like? What, what problems are you trying to solve? And if you want to do that, why do you need the ordinance? Just adopt the state regulations like you say, and whereas six you want to do, and adopt appropriate regulations. The, uh, operations aren't yet legal until the Oregon Health Authority actually completes their rules and regulations and makes them legal. As with respect to the ordinance itself, again, since you just want time to be able to adopt the state regulations and pursue the reasonable date, time, and manner of operation regulations, as you stated above, you should have a ending date for the prohibition to match the time you adopt the regulations. But again, it's not clear why you even need the ordinance. The ordinance itself, as written, is toothless, you have no means of enforcement, you have, yeah, nothing in place that would allow you to do anything than wave a piece of paper at someone who could ignore you. Uh, so that, that should be fixed. The explanatory statement. All you say in the explanatory statement is that you're allowed to adopt the ordinance, therefore we are going to adopt the ordinance. That's a pretty empty rationale. Shouldn't it explain why you are doing it, what the problem is that you want to solve, and how this ordinance accomplishes that? Yeah, it's a totally empty statement. So again, there is no good reason for this ordinance. Do not move it ahead with the first reading, which you shouldn't have done, I'm surprised, counselors, that you've read this and are moving it ahead. Yeah, I do apologize, I was unable to be at your June twenty ninth meeting and I was unable to view the, uh, meeting videos, it's not up on YouTube, so, you know, maybe you had some extensive and deep discussion at that meeting. But again, I can't think of any good reason for this ordinance, it solves nothing. Thank you very much.
It was canceled, so. Motion to accept the Lake County Community Economic Development grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, probably won't speak to this.
Yes, this is a grant from Lake County Economic Development to go towards our multipurpose conference space at City North Pioneer Street. They're going to award us fifty thousand dollars to go towards the construction costs. As a requirement of receiving this money, they want us to make this space available free of charge in community groups, businesses, nonprofits, or anybody else who, who uses it. That's how they're just applying this economic development project. Since it's over five thousand dollars, city council.
We did this already when we talked about it, or we talked about it a couple of times, like different years.
No, this is not.
Because we went ahead to the project knowing that this funding was in it, so I would have thought that that was better.
Yeah, this factor didn't do our funding, which is for the project.
Happening on the back end.
Yeah, I guess you could say.
So we knew for sure it was coming.
Yep.
Yeah, we had promised that, I think, Bill, thirty thousand dollars, said here, how much? But, uh, I'll kind of discuss a little bit with, uh, they would say, they didn't, you may not even have it, you have the mechanics of signing up for it, I think, with City Hall or through the library or, or you have, you may have thought about it.
We would probably, the way I've seen it, other libraries is go to the circulation desk and you check it out, they give you a key. We'll maintain a schedule for anybody who might have preserved it.
Just online, schedule online or?
Um, I, I don't think that would be necessary.
It just, I'm not, I'm not telling you to do it, but I tell you not to do it, I just wonder.
I think they could just call the library and say, I'd like to reserve this office room at such and such time.
Any other questions? You have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the Lake County Community Economic Development grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the multipurpose conference space and authorize the city to sign the grant award letter.
Go to motion. Here we have a second, Jimmy, you have a second. Uh, motion to accept the Lake County Community Economic Development grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, do we have further discussion or questions? I hear you, I'm seeing any, uh, all those favor of motion to accept the Lake County Community Economic Development grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for a new multipurpose conference room and authorize the city to sign the grant award letter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, they came on earlier and said that they would, uh, maybe give us the money, you know, you got it. That's one of those babies, that's a pretty good sized baby.
No, they, they were pretty insistent whenever I, I'll give my predecessor credit for lining it up, and then whenever I joined the city, they're one of the first folks that I contacted, and they were pretty insistent, this was the, the part at the front.
Uh, motion to approve a memorandum of understanding about the regional accelerator and innovative network, rank people, just a process.
This is a two-year MOB between Rain and, among Rain, the city and the city of Oak Ridge, for a consultant to work with local entrepreneurs. The mail is for ten thousand dollars, that is what I budgeted. And this is for their consultant to hold events and programs, anybody who wants to start up a business, they can contact the consultant to get some free training. And we've been working with them for quite some time.
Yes. I, I haven't been able to attend, I've talked to her often, and then I just haven't been able to work that in. Have you been to any of their get togethers lately? She's always asking, you know, how we can get people involved, so I'm wondering whether people aren't involved and engaged here. I support it, but I, you know, that's the problem with small business people is, they're not just sitting around waiting for a meeting.
I'm into, aren't you talking about like the coffee meetups that they have, I've been to a few of those, I've often. The one I went to, I didn't stay for the whole thing, it's just city, city folks, I think one of my staff went. Um, every time that she's had one, I check in and she's, she said that she's had a few people on in. And they, they hold more than just the coffee meetups, they have classes.
I went some early on, it's like about fifteen, twenty people, but also evidence, Wayne's some, you know, they, people got in there, seeing what they, they're, 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 they're still interested. And I think, uh, why we're in kind of a growth mode, the whole city have, if, uh, this, they can stay with it. Yes, take it to.
This is just a word, but this is a twenty thousand, all community, ten thousand, this year.
Oh, did they say why we're increasing? Because I believe we already increased twenty five hundred, seventy five hundred previously. What, what is the increase from seventy five hundred to ten thousand?
That pays for the consultants that didn't want to, they get a more competitive, correct?
I would have liked to have seen that in here, about explaining why, that's a twenty five percent increase, that's a pretty big jump, you know, eleven percent.
It would be interesting to know some of that, because it.
That's just, I see a, I see a fifty percent jump over the last, over these three years.
Yeah, so something else that, that could be driving that is they are, um, they're adding a venture catalyst, so the current one that we have now, she covers a wide swath of Lake County. And it's too much, so they're creating one who just focuses on that, this area. So without there being as many communities to pitch in, you know, we're having to pitch in a little bit more for the city. So that might be part of it too.
And I just feel like anytime you're, 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 you know, asking for a twenty five percent rate, it should be some, you know, information given as to why we increase. And I don't, I don't really, you know, get that from this, but, um, yeah, my other concern is, is are we getting new people involved, you, you mentioned Florida, I believe Florida Living has been involved with them for three to five years now.
Well, right.
And, and that's what I'd like to see, is I'd like to see, are, are we getting new entrepreneurs? Or are we just having the same folks engaged with Rain time after time after time? I mean, at some point, it's really not a new small business, it's the same small businesses. And I don't know if there's added value, I mean, I feel like at some point Rain is there to give the impetus on how you get started, not sustaining another small business. So I'm concerned that we're putting money into something, um, that is for, that really it isn't serving the needs that's there. So I, that's something I'd like to see is are we engaging new entrepreneurs and getting new people involved in stores and industry dynamics?
Yeah, well, and that's why the concern about outreach and, and it's like, I, you know, again, it's one of those things, when people need help, they seek it. If you have to go force feed it, then is it really a need, you know, so, um, entrepreneurs I know are pretty resourceful and sniffing out help like that, so if it's not being well attended, then, then yeah, I think we need to have a discussion at some point about what it is we can do, or whether it's.
Well, maybe they'll do things, they look at it this next year, so we know that we don't want to keep going.
Well, we've got a motion before us tonight, I'd like to see table this motion until August second and get more information from Rain involving new participation and why the twenty five percent increase in costs, and like I said, fifty percent over three years.
If you table this item, if you like, for them to participate in the next meeting, to have a.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, they've always been, you know, they've always been geared here by getting this information, that'd be fine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, if I agree with, uh, go ahead and table this. Next up, uh, page fifteen is, uh, motion to approve agreement with Penny Hummel, by a thousand dollars.
Yes, I'm asking for an approval, approval of a contract to extend our engagement with Penny, a budget of five thousand dollars in there in case we need to refer to help transition things over or to help train up the new librarian. Since we have somebody on board who is an experienced librarian, I don't really think we're gonna need a whole lot of help with this, but this will be an additional resource in case we need it.
How much time is that? I, I should probably.
It, well, you know, she has her hourly rate, but she's been very generous with us, so.
I'm just curious.
She's billing us at a hundred seventy five dollars per hour.
About a little less than thirty hours.
Yeah, so that's reasonable. And, oh yeah, I have no concerns about that, first time I ever talked to her.
So I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with Penny Hummel for library consulting services in the amount of five thousand and authorize the city.
We have a second, Jimmy. Motion to approve the agreement with Penny Hummel for five thousand dollars, do we have further discussion or questions? Let's see, I hear you think, all those favor of motion to approve agreement with Penny Hummel for the library consulting services in the amount of five thousand dollars and authorize, authorize the city administrator to sign, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next motion approved, resolution seven ninety one, resolution to extend the utility assistance program.
This is to renew the utility assistance program and to make it permanent, essentially. The council approved this program at the start of budget, at the start of COVID, to provide relief to citizens who were socio-economically challenged. Whenever the program was first implemented, it expired annually, and it's, we've had renewed it since then. It's a great pro, program, it's been a great service to citizens who needed it, costing us a whole lot, it's administratively easy implement. So I'm recommending that we renew it retroactive to July one, expire June thirtieth, and keep it in effect until any further changes are made.
There's about, what, ten to forty five people?
I don't even think there's two dozen on it, it's less than twenty.
That's good, but do you, do you have a question?
I almost, I almost wonder if we said thirty percent versus twenty five. But basically, we just took with our one rate, reasons why I first, we just pretty much eliminated five percent of the twenty five percent, so never. So, um, I would propose, you know, the smaller amount, usually if you, I have a full, a full thought that the people that are utilizing this program really need it. And, um, uh, I know that those families in the world would need this kind of help, and, um, I, I would propose raising it to thirty percent.
Do we include that?
There's also other help, though, out there for utility assistance. This is really help. You know, there are several. And is this water and sewer?
Yeah.
We need the water master plan, but costs are going to be going up for that. So I'm reluctant to reallocate at this point. That's just
With two, with two dozen people involved, I feel that a 5% increase across the 200 people is that's a bunch in terms of of the impact on the city's coffers. But if we have major impact on the 200 city residents. I don't, did you ever see, we could propose that in this motion?
Okay, so if the council wants, wants to go that route. I would have to analyze that.
Let's say an average bill of $120. So 25% of that, which is 30% of that, 2000.
But it's just on the service, right? Is it on, is it just on the service of usage?
It's on, he's asking, is it on the basic charge or is it on the bill?
It's on the bill. Ben, so.
Thanks, Courtney. Excellent. Thanks. Would it be possible to pass this as written tonight? I'm going to ask you to come back with contributions and talk about the budget implications.
Absolutely. We can always amend the program to make it more generous.
Also, if we're going to have a featured session, talk about the trigger to cause we implement this program, I think it would be good to see that. Service rates.
Those two, one.
I like that.
But I would like to read that this based on our previous trigger point that we just missed. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 791, a resolution to indefinitely extend the utility assistance program established by Resolution 746.
Motion by Tim, second back Gail, motion to approve Resolution 791. For the discussions, questions? Although favor of motion to approve Resolution 791, a resolution to indefinitely extend the utility assistance program established by Resolution 746. Say the bottom, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Discussion of priorities for the city.
We are a member of Oregon League of Cities. They are requesting their member cities to submit a ballot. Rest a vote on what is important to us. What do we want to lead to lobby for? I've included that here. So council will then provide some direction to me. If you want to pick out five items tonight, I'll be happy to submit that ballot for us. Also included the policy or the priorities from the LOC that explains each of these.
You want me to tell you what I got just for fun? Pick it up. Number four, community resiliency and wildfire planning, since we are here. Address measure 110 shortcomings. I hear a lot about that because I work with people in law enforcement. Incentives for broadband affordability, number 20. Option of consumer protections, number 26, what I just mentioned, and 28, infrastructure financing and resilience again, because I do good at that.
I'm sorry.
Four, eight, 20, 26, 28.
Four, eight, 20, 26, 28.
I didn't select pretending public employees and officials.
I, I, I think number 25, we've already faced this issue in our city ourselves, the organization, our report faces this issue. And my brother runs a tow company. The abandoned recreational vehicle issue is becoming a really hot topic. Could use right now for the RV straight up city. Well, we have nothing. What sort of tow company will not come tow it away? There's issues with ash materials. There's issues with, with getting it for you to all. And you can be looking, we could be looking at, at, you know, 10 to 15 to 20,000 dollars of oxygen RV taken off the streets of Wolf. And I think it's, you know, aside from that, it's obviously statewide lobbying. I think that's a bigger topic. And if you, you know, go out in the wilderness areas and woods, you'll see it's just as much of an issue out there as it is on any street of any city in Oregon. So I think that's a lot bigger issue than they see at first.
Right. We can underwrite it. We can put all of the above.
I thought it was a bit with six.
But we can take one of these things off.
I'm majorly in favor of number four, like, like you said, and also number 26. I happily support those two. So.
Let's take up 28 then. We'll see. That's how we get termination. Throw one into the bus and then the city.
Throw one into the yard.
Let's take up 28 then, because there's a lot of that stuff up there too. I don't want to miss out on the 110 because that, there's a lot of can be problematic for places like ours that don't have.
No, no. Measure one.
Oh, 110. I'm sorry.
So four, eight, 20, 25, and 26.
Okay, any other business? Any public comments?
According to your agenda, if we're supposed to make a motion. Maureen, you've got the numbers already. How would you feel about that?
I'll make a motion to establish four, eight, 23, 5, and 26 on the list of priorities. I move to authorize the city administrator to submit the following issues for inclusion in the city's 2023 legislative priority ballot. Four, eight, 20, 25, and 26.
I'll say. We have a motion to support four, eight, 20, 25, and 26. Any discussion questions? Okay, although it's paid for motion to authorize the city administrator to submit the following issues for the inclusion of the league of cities to 2023 legislative priority ballots as four, eight, 20, 25, and 26. Say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Back on again, public comments? Okay, let's see here. Okay, we're going to be recessing here, going into executive session. I think the session could last say probably close to an hour, possibly. Thirty minutes to an hour. And then we'll be coming back into session for making decisions. Any questions before we recess? If not, then we are recessing in our meeting at 8:02.